Backer.
Here.
Delosier.
Here.
Halm.
Here.
Gentlemen, we have a quorum.
Commissioner Delosier, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Halm, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Father, we just are saddened, Father, our hearts go out to the nineteen families that were lost as we, Father, firefighters doing their job. So, Father, Lord, we just ask that you be with all the emergency personnel and guide as they go out to protect our homes, protect our lives. Father, we thank for the men and women serving on foreign souls so that we have freedom. And, Father, we just praise your name, for it's in Christ when we pray.
Okay, item number five, approve, disapprove the minutes from June 24th, the regular meeting, and June 27th, reconvening meeting. Is there a motion?
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number six, new business, consideration and possible action with respect to any other matters not known about which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the posting of the agenda. Gentlemen, is there any new business? Okay, item number seven, announcements. Do we have any announcements? Item number eight, unfinished business, award bid number ten, micro-surfacing. This item was opened and tabled from June 24th, 2013. Do you have those?
You have the, did you bring that, DS?
No.
Do you want to run and get it?
Okay, let's move on, we'll go back to that. Number two, bid number six, nineteen, janitorial services for the health department. This item was opened and tabled from June 24th, 2013. Ms. Merriman.
We propose to take the low bid, Service Masters.
Service Masters?
Yes.
And you said they were the low bid?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept a bid from Service Master.
Second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number three, award bid number twenty-two, precast concrete culvert pipe. This item was opened and tabled from June 24th.
I guess he might get them, he must have forgotten them.
Okay, let's move on. Item number eleven, roads and bridges, bridge management system, aid in developing the fifth year of the five-year bridge replacement program, local government selection list. Who's speaking on this one?
Do we have a selection list to go by?
Well, here's the letter.
Is it from?
I don't.
This came in last week. I think it's just going to guide along on how you have to select.
Right, I don't think that it has the list attached. It's for the, um, Department of Attorney.
It's from ODOT. I haven't seen it, so, you want us to make copies and put it on for next week?
Yes.
To have a chance to review. Make the motion to table for one week.
I seconded it, I'm sorry.
Me?
Okay, Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and tabled for one week.
We have nothing under items twelve or thirteen, down to item fourteen, utility permits. Right-of-way agreement bind between Rogers County Board of County Government and Oklahoma Natural Gas for certain demands. The legal is reflected in your agenda, this is for the 911 center. I put it on because it was kind of the last, before the agenda could be posted. Commissioner Delosier, do you have anything on that?
Do you have that, Rob?
Yes.
Like this, Mr. Eskey, we haven't seen this yet.
No, I'd be glad to take a look at it while we're, kind of, the things as you wish.
Okay. We'll come back to that one. Quiets, do we have one, or just two?
Just two, number two.
Okay, no number one, number two only, attended care and attention transportation claim for May 2013, $1,605.19.
Second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Right here.
Yes.
Did you get both of them?
What?
We need the other two, um, cast concrete, culvert pipes.
On y'all table, as y'all open, you're gonna bring them the next time, or y'all won't?
Yeah, 'cause usually, we look at them, yeah. You want some?
Let's use that one.
Uh, it's bid number twenty-two.
We used to have two bids on us.
Okay, we're back under unfinished business, item number eight. Unfinished business number one is bid number ten.
Okay, we have two bids.
Sent out twenty, bids received two, and two were undeliverable, so we actually had two bids.
Got Vance Brothers at the 260, a square yard, non-residential and residential. And Donelson at 265, non-residential and 295 residential, roads.
How much for the non? 265?
265.
At 295? Are those both square yard as well?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we go with low bid, which one were they?
Vance Brothers.
Vance Brothers, at 260 a square yard. If there's further discussion.
That is the low bid.
Low bid.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
He's not back yet. Okay, let's go down to item sixteen, blanket purchase orders. Do we have one, or one and two?
We have one only.
One only.
And then several.
Okay.
District one to Lowe's for 500. District one to Centos for 1,500. District one to County Building Center for 100. District one to O'Reilly Auto Parts, 350. District one to RNS Auto for 350.
Those are the bids.
District one to RNS Auto Parts for 150. Sheriff's Office to Condata for 17,000. Sheriff to Rogers County District one for fuel for 3,000. Sheriff to O'Reilly Auto Parts for 500. Sheriff to Speedy Louvre for 500. Emergency Management to Condata for fuel, 100. Emergency Management to Froman for fuel, 500. District three to Walmart, 100. District three to Diamond P. Lawn and Garden, 150. District three, American Waste Control, 690 dollars. That's for the clamor yard. District three to American Waste Control for the Myola Yard, 1,380. District three to Ameriflex Hose and Accessories for 500. District three to Pixly for 300. District three to Lowe's for 500. District three to RNS Auto Parts, 500. Assessor's Office to District three for fuel, 500. Assessor's Office to District one for fuel, 200. Assessor to District two for fuel, 200. Planning Commission to District three for fuel, 1,000. That is all of them.
Okay, make a motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
Second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, let's go back to item number eight, unfinished business, number three, award bid number twenty-two, precast concrete culvert pipe. I looked, I looked those over, and it seems like they're different prices, because there's dozens and dozens of sizes. Some are cheaper on one, some are cheaper on the other one, so we'll have to look through and see what you think. Is this mostly bid for District one?
No.
I mean, I know we can all use them, but I don't typically use concrete.
I do.
Oh, do you, Mr.?
You can go one if you want to, go into something else, I'll look for a little while.
Okay. We have nothing until we get to item number nineteen. Agenda item number one, update by BKL Incorporated and Flint Co. regarding the courthouse and E-911 projects. You want to go, stranger?
Really not much to report, it's going well. We're working on the 911 center, we have a project meeting out there this afternoon. I'm sure we did the progress, I believe, on some of those. DJ, Tommy, Larry, stands up, and I'm getting product on, staying up for the projects. Hopefully starting ELC work.
Questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Reesley. Mr. Thaler.
The fire pump was replaced over the weekend, everything went smooth on that. We're planning on starting the ELC project on the ninth of July, and we coordinated with the sheriff's department. As far as 911 center goes, it's going, going well. We're gonna start putting the first coat of paint on today, and we're gonna turn building power on tomorrow, and we're shooting to have HVAC going in the building mid-morning, so, moving on.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, sir. Item number two, resolution to join and approve an interlocal cooperative agreement with the Circuit Engineering District. Mr. Eskey, have you looked, have you looked?
I believe I have.
It's just a resolution to renew it.
Second.
I dropped on my papers.
Okay.
Okay, who made the motion?
Commissioner Halm, I seconded it.
All right. Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Number three, resolution for lease purchase agreements for equipment fiscal year 2013 and 14.
That's the list of the lease purchase agreements.
Just, Rob, is this for the commission, for all lease equipment?
It's for districts one, two, and three.
So just the commission?
Yes.
Okay, well, everybody else is submitting theirs, had a later day?
Nelson?
I'm not the sheriff's.
You got it? So you have lease, you have all the leases?
I have the new, just the new set, I don't have all of her stuff.
So you're submitting, have a later day?
I'll have it by next week.
Okay, then, Kristin? Turn it to your desk. So Kristin, do you have all the forms filled out, to sign that car and everything, so we have that to go with the lease? Do we have any of that? Can we have it next week?
For who?
Yeah, who's in that car? If it's totally, fully insured, and then lease agreement for?
Jerry.
Oh, thank you. Do we have, do we have all that, so that Nelson can present it?
That would be a question.
Not this time, we have an issue on the vehicle down here.
Okay, so what is that issue? Do we have it?
Not this time.
Okay, so can we have it next week, if he's gonna present the leases? Okay.
I've got the nine thing, new ones, ready, I mean, that legislation, but that's what I've got.
Motion to approve. Second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number four, discussion and possible action regarding contract between Everbridge and Rogers County Board of Commissioners. Director Stoops.
Now, this is our alert system that we, we just needed to do a contract for the fiscal year. Commissioner Halm asked me to put it back on the agenda, just to, that way it's a year, fiscal year kind of thing, it's already signed, it's ready to ship off. As soon as we're through with the meeting, if you guys approve me to ship it off, then I ship the contract off to them for the fiscal year 2013, 14.
Any questions or comments?
Anybody, you put this money to the side, so you can take care of the side.
This was, yeah, I put this in the, in the budget, I actually had to put all of this money into my temporary agreement that they agreed on last week, so it should be good to go the way I wish.
So you're satisfied with your recommendation?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Halm, I mean, Backer.
Here.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Number five, discussion and possible action regarding contract between Fran Herliska, fiscal year 14, revision, and the Rogers County Board of Commissioners Health Department. Do we have that?
Yes. Do you want to talk about what the revision is, or do you want to?
Uh, the revision was to go from 20 dollars an hour to 25. She's a registered nurse and does diabetic classes three times a year, and has not had an increase in whatever, so that was our proposal.
Questions? Motion to approve? I'll second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, back to item number eight, unfinished business, award bid number twenty-two, Commissioner Delosier.
Make a motion to go with the low bid all across the board, which is Skirlock Industries.
On the pipe. I'll second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved to go with Skirlock.
Okay.
Mr. Eskey.
Okay, utility permits.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, now, back to item number six, under agenda items. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial lease agreement between Bill and Paula McAnally and the Board of County Commissioners for a satellite yard in District three. Uh, this is, as it says, is a satellite yard, we have found a place over in the Catusa area on Pine Street, that we can stockpile rock and, and different things. Um, I've asked Mr. Eskey to come up with a commercial lease agreement, and this is it, I don't know if you gentlemen have seen it. Anyway, there's, there's some room there, and we can store equipment, we can store snowplows and different things, there's some buildings on it to keep them in and out of the weather. Uh, it's fenced, and that's about it. Any questions or comments on that? Okay?
Is it, I do have one, is it, well, lease, just a lease, or is it lease purchase?
No, it's lease, it's strictly leased property. And what, what it does is it gives us a place to, we're spread out now because of the redistricting, it gives us a place to keep mowing equipment, you know, trackers, uh, snowplows, snowtrucks, and stockpile rocks, so it's, it's gonna help us to better serve that area in Catusa. Oh, and the, the rent that they lease pay, you know, is 32.50 per month. I'll maybe throw that in. Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding establishing a separate account in general government for a purpose of paying employee benefits. Madam Clerk.
Teresa Jackson and I had been discussing this, because we feel like that that should be something in a separate account that can't be touched by anything else, because employee benefits are very, it's very important to the county, and we just, we want to see what you gentlemen thought about it, about creating a separate account for the budget.
Questions or comments on this item?
When we budgeted the amount, we went ahead and put it in the general account like we normally have, but we had also talked to Bill Turner, and he said it's strictly up to us, uh, he said some counties do it that way, and some just keep it in the general fund, but to keep it clean, we just felt it would be easier to keep, have it in one account.
Mr. Eskey, have you been informed about this?
I have, and I don't know that it's necessary to me to weigh in, I think it's just how you choose to do your bookkeeping, basically, is what it is.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Madam Clerk, your recommendation to bid now?
We would prefer it, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, item number seven.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding an agreement between Rogers County Sheriff's Office and the Rogers County E-911 Dispatch with respect to the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety, State Administrator for the Oklahoma Law Enforcement Telecommunication System, Director Hamilton.
This is an agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety, allowing us, recognizing the Rogers County 911 Dispatch Center. It's currently, the OLEDS terminal is under, being used by the Rogers County Sheriff's Office, and all this is doing is acknowledging us to have access to that. Please keep in mind that the sheriff will have his sole authority as to who has access to that terminal, and with his governing over that, he also has the authority who we may and may not hire. As an example, the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety will not allow anyone to control that terminal that has had a criminal history, and that's something that the sheriff's office has the full authority to enforce.
Questions?
Your recommendation?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
I was gonna ask John, too, so.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Right here. We'll come back to it.
Yeah.
We got several things here. Okay. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding memorandum of understanding cooperative agreement for public safety answering points between Rogers County Board of Commissioners, public safety answering point, and the city of Owasso, public safety answering point. Director Hamilton.
What this is, is an agreement between us and the city of Owasso, that if Rogers County loses 911 connectivity, that our 911 calls will be routed, routed to the city of Owasso, and particular handling of that call is specified in that document.
This is the same as it's always been, isn't it?
Yes.
We're not changing anything here?
No, because we've separated from Incog, we needed an MOU in place.
Correct. Motion to approve? Second.
Backer.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number 10, discussion and possible action regarding Motorola Solutions in reference to bid number 616. Director Hamilton.
I have Steve Kumrow and Jonathan, Jonathan, I don't remember his name.
Morgan.
Morgan from Motorola that would like to present to you about their proposal in reference to bid 616. Jonathan?
And if you would, state your name and spelling for?
My name is Steve Kumrow, it's K-U-M-R-O-W, I'm with Motorola Solutions Incorporated. We have worked with Rogers County entities and several members of your, your board for the last two years, trying to define the requirements for your dispatch center, and we have covered a wide gamut of possibilities. Our recommendation is to accept the proposal we've made for the, we responded to the RFP, and then also to bid 616. I think there are something like 14 of these proposals have been delivered, but the product and system that we have proposed to you, in our opinion, provides you the greatest flexibility as far as where you may end up in the future, as far as your communications requirements. And we are using the MCC 7500 series console position, seven positions, and we, we designed it based upon the specifications that we were provided. Currently, we're controlling conventional radio resources that currently has multiple unit entities already that utilize the state's 800 megahertz trunk system. I think Limestone, Chelsea, Catusa Police and Fire are the ones that come to mind immediately, but this 7500 series console allows you, at some point, should more entities join this network, the state has gotten some additional funding avenues through House Bill 652 that may potentially provide them additional funding to maybe help put a site at the RSU campus towers that we investigated early on in this process. Given the fact that you're pretty much surrounded by a lot of entities that do utilize the 800 megahertz, and the possibility that you may decide to go there at some particular time, I don't feel particularly good about giving you a console, you know, product that doesn't allow connection to that, to that network. What we've done is set this up where this can function perfectly and do all of the conventional operations at your location currently, and would give you that opportunity, you know, now, to, as long as the life cycle of this product is, I do think that the 7500 series console will be around longer than any of the other console products that we offer. But if, you know, I don't know what your budget is, if you decide that you want to investigate a different Motorola console, we can do that. One of the other things that is included when we do these projects as the corporation is we provide the services that you're going to require, you're under a relatively the services that you're going to require. You're under a relatively short timeline to get this implemented and put in. We're gonna provide a professional project manager. We ship this equipment to our staging center in Chicago. In other words, we stage it, test it, and package it up. All the, all the tags and cables are, are marked for easier implementation in the field. Um, then we provide, you know, Jonathan, our subsystem engineer, and the system technologists come, uh, to your location, optimize the system. We have, we bring in our professional training staff to train your operators. Uh, in my experience of thirty-seven years, that's pretty darn critical that the, uh, that the operators are, are well-trained in these products. Um, we have a lot of resources corporate-wide in, in, in this state. We have a system technologist in the state. We have an engineer in the state, myself. We have a customer support manager, and our project manager all live in Oklahoma. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm open to work with, you know, I've got a great deal invested in working with you in the last couple of years. Uh, we wanna see this 911 center be successful. And, um, you know, I, I still think that long-term, this is a better investment for you than an alternative product. But if you wanna go with an alternative product, we'll can, we'll consider, uh, working with you on that. There's several ways we can do that. We can, you know, keep it as a Motorola Solutions project where we provide you the, uh, the, the professional services that go with, with that, uh, and change the, the equipment to a fifty-five-hundred series console. The problem that I have with the fifty-five-hundred series, as I stated earlier, it does not have the ability to, uh, uh, as an IP connectivity product. It does not have the ability to connect to the Oakwind or the, the state's public safety network.
Any questions? I, I have some. Okay, you said you'd like to see the 911 center, uh, be successful. What, define successful?
Uh, in other words, have the radio resources at, you know, at the, uh, at the accessibility and control of your 911 operators.
With this system that you're talking about, the seventy-five-hundred, you're saying that that would give the 911 center the ability to talk with all of the entities, fire, police, ambulance, sheriff, everybody?
It, it provides all the entities that are in your RFP.
Because that's, that's one of the concerns I hear from, uh, some of the entities is they want a, a system where they can all communicate, which is.
Right.
Common sense. This would give the ability to do that?
Yeah.
If, if they're on, I mean, do they have to buy special radios? I mean, what, how does that work?
In, in this particular design, they'll continue to use the same radios they use today. We're just providing a means to control or access those resources. That's basically what a console does, is take all those different inputs. Uh, the console can do, you know, can patch a couple of those different, you know, like the four fire department and another fire department. They can be patched temporarily for, for an incident. You know, those are some of the capabilities that the, that the control panel of, of the radio console provides.
Questions?
You know, we also included an eight-hundred megahertz control station because you have so much of that, you know, the, the different people. I mean, Limestone uses their eight-hundred as, as their primary voice communications. Now, from a dispatch perspective, they use conventional so that they can be paged. But, um, the eight-hundred in there, I would recommend that you listen to the regional mutual aid calling channel. There's a state protocol. And by listening to that, any, any eight-hundred traffic, uh, OHP trooper or, you know, City of Tulsa pursuit comes out here, Catoosa can contact you on, on the RMA channel and ask you to, you know, they can take that whole chase incident over to an eight-hundred RMA and she could do a patch to, to whatever VHF, uh, resource would be there also. So it does provide you a great deal of flexibility as far as that's concerned. I think at some point, when you talk about entities that want to, you know, that they'd really like to have a system that they could all communicate together, the best technology that we have today is this trunked radio technology where you have a pool of, of channels and you digitally request a channel. You create hundreds of different talk groups. If, if, we don't call them channels anymore. It's analogous to a telephone line, number, or a telephone line. So that digital ID or that, their digital talk group gets assigned and they carry on their conversation. And not everybody in, that's quote, "on that channel" has to listen to all that activity. But the ability for those entities then to communicate with one another becomes much simpler. I mean, they will have common channels in, in their radios, uh, to do that with. You know, instead of, the fire department maybe having one repeater station, they may have a dispatch talk group, and they may have two or three, uh, fire ground scenes, depending upon whether they have more than one incident going on at a time. You can do that when you're digital addressing all these different talkers. You can't do that conventional because you just have the one channel. It's more of a, I guess, a party line type scenario.
But this, this would give, uh, the ability to do just that, to talk?
Yes.
To communicate with everyone?
Yeah. Say, say it. You guys petition the state and you say, you know, "We'd really like to pull everybody together. Could you help us in funding a site to put at Roger State University?" Say that happens in the next couple of years. Then you have the ability to tie into the core, which is at Tulsa. And you would have to rent a T1 to do that with. But at that point, then you have access to every, you know, to any possible entity in northeast Oklahoma, for that matter, uh, plus all of the regional mutual aid talk groups, state mutual aid talk groups. I mean, they have a, they have a very good multi-agency communications plan. And every radio in the state has those resources in them.
Well, Mr. Penner, I'll tell you, I would like to see, uh, see you on the next agenda of the 911 committee. Is it, it was Wednesday? We could, okay. We need to get you on there because we need to tie this down. But I would like the committee to, to make a recommendation on this to the board, um, the ones that, that actually use it, so they can make a decision on, on, and then come with a recommendation.
When do you meet on Wednesday?
Sunday.
I, I can do that. I don't think Jonathan can, but I can.
And then we can, uh, let the, let the advisory board come together on this and, and make a recommendation.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I got a couple. BJ?
Yes, sir.
When are you gonna be done with that?
We're scheduled to be completed with it early October.
Okay. And they, and this, in your summary here of the project work schedule, you have six-ten, uh, starting, uh, your project work set, the schedule.
Right.
Task finishes up nine-thirty. If you're, if you're doing all the stuff right now to put it in, then how do we get this in there to match up with you if we haven't approved it yet? Are we behind, forward, where are we at?
All similar to this building. All the cabling, we're actually writing all the cabling. And all the cabling to each jack is going into the communication room. And then they hook their equipment up in that room.
So then they will have to come in after you finish. They will have to come in and do all their stuff.
Yes.
Okay. Project work schedule, uh, finishes out in nine-thirty. And then you don't need to train everybody on this system.
Yes, sir.
What a short window.
It's a tight schedule. And we, we, I think now that we've basically slipped thirty days, I think that it's probably going to slip thirty days past the nine-thirty. I think it's probably more realistic to think it's going to be into October.
I don't think that'll work. Director Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
How many entities have said, "I'm yet signed up, ready to go"?
We only have one entity that has provided the document back to us that Attorney Orbison requested signage of, and that was the town of Talala. And it's an incomplete document, so it has to be returned.
It, it seems to me like they're not signing up because I think they wanna see how it's gonna go. I mean, I don't think that's, um, out, out of question to say that we wanna see it working before we do anything, before we actually commit. Um, they've had two, two years to commit. So, and I've said all along, build it, and they will come. So are you saying, are you saying, are you making any recommendations here today?
My recommendation is that we cannot afford to wait any longer to equip this building. I have other things that needs to be equipped, and we're costing us ourselves valuable time. My recommendation is to move forward with, with our needs.
And, and what, uh, clarify that a little bit. Move forward with our needs?
Uh, such as furniture, such as protocols, the logging recorder, the radios, uh, everything that we need to move forward with. I got to have it in place. BJ informed me last week that we need to have the furniture in place by the end of July. And there's no way I can meet that deadline. A vendor needs five weeks alone after they receive a signed contract. It'd be, um, I had stated a few months ago that we don't have time to waste anymore. And now it's obvious that we've wasted time and we don't have the time to waste.
So are you, are you, okay, furniture, that's, uh, for this Motorola piece of it, are you saying that we need, you're recommending to, to accept the bid, uh, what was it, six-sixteen?
The bid number six-sixteen.
Are you recommended to accept it as presented or?
Yes, sir, I am.
Budget-wise?
There is funds in the 911 budget, but as I've explained, there are a lot of 911 needs. Is it possible that the Board of County Commissioners could pay for the radios? According to the vote.
Wait, oh, go ahead.
According to the vote, the Board of County Commissioners or, or county government would build and equip that center.
Yeah, I understand that part. I'll, when you, you asked a specific question, could the county pay for it? And right now, I don't, I don't know what the numbers, uh, what are the numbers on this?
This is four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. Is that correct, Steve?
I think it's four-nineteen.
Four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars.
It's four-nineteen-three-oh-eight. And in the page after the pricing summary, we have provided a tax-exempt municipal lease purchase where the county, in, in this can, there's a great deal of flexibility as to how this is structured, but we took a shot at it. We provided the first year of basically a, a no payment, and the first payment due July one of, uh, twenty-fourteen. And then six payments of, I think it was sixty-four-thousand five ninety-two.
How many four did you say?
Six.
Six.
Seven, seven-year cycle with the first payment in, uh, in seven-one-twenty-fourteen is the way this was structured. Uh, the effective annual rate was two-point-five-nine percent at the time that we did this.
Is Motorola financing?
Yes, Motorola Credit Corporation.
Got a better interest rate?
We're already a, a point under prime. I don't think I could beat that.
You don't think you could, but could you?
No, no, I can't. I can't.
Okay. And how long, if this is approved, how long would it be until you can start working with, uh, Flintco and putting it in?
I think we would start working as far as a planning session immediately with Flintco. But as far as, I mean, we, the build and ship of this equipment will probably take, uh, six weeks to eight weeks to get it shipped and staged.
Okay. I think, I think with all this, this time crunch, um, the inaction of the entities to get involved, uh, I understand where they're coming from, but, uh, we need to move on. So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion. Yeah, sure. Oh, you got a question?
I, I have a couple comments if I could.
Okay. Mr. Hamilton?
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Puckett.
Under this, under this, uh, amount of money, and also under your lease for seven years, any new updates that come, any new technology that come, would that be all, also the, in this to update the equipment at the same time?
No, sir.
Okay. So it's a standalone unit?
Well, it's, it's a project.
Okay.
So it, it's the project price. I mean, if, if you decided you wanted to add additional capabilities, you would have to pay for that.
So what you're saying is the seventy-five-hundred, uh, console and the way it's set up is something that's a long-term. You don't see an update to that?
It depends upon.
Take what you wanna, what you wanna do with it.
Okay. But with this platform, at least I have a way to get there. If I don't use this platform, I may not.
Yeah, 'cause the fifty-five-hundred, you said, its restriction is obsolete. The seventy-five-hundred, it gives you a chance to update.
I mean, if, if you decide to get closer to this eight-hundred trunk-type, uh, technology. And the trunking technology, while it is more expensive, it provides what your entities are asking for, is the ability to all maybe be on a single network and, and provide an easy way to communicate amongst, uh, each other.
That answer, back there. Mr. Puckett?
Uh, Commissioner, I, I'd like to point out that, uh, Ms. Hamilton said that Talala has committed to being in the, uh, in, in the 911 center. And all that Talala has done is signed off on the beneficiary to be part of the trust. The town of Ulega has also signed off on that. And I asked Ms. Hamilton to get it with Mr. Orbison because the format that they had given to us, we cannot make any corrections or anything on it. That's why it's incomplete and incorrect because they tried to go in there and write over, fill in the blank area here. They tried to write over that. That's why it's incomplete. Second of all, we was under the understanding of our last meeting that the fifty-five-hundred system was to be presented to us and was presented to us. And we decided at that point in time that we were supposed to go out and look to see if it was under WISKA, I think is the program, which is a state program, which you don't have to have bids or anything. You, it's, it's a state, uh, signature contract. And we were supposed to come back together and form and make that decision. Nobody has committed to the 911 center because we still do not have numbers. I can tell you that for the fact that everybody has done that because there is no numbers. And the fifty-five-hundred system was able to do what we wanted it to plus more. And then in the future, if we needed to go up, we met those needs and we can do that, we would move up. And they said, "No problem coming in there and doing that."
So it's the fifty-five-hundred system you're talking about, is that with Motorola?
Yeah. Yes, that was with Motorola.
The WISKA contract is with Motorola Solutions.
Okay, here's the deal. It's been two years. Okay? Nobody's committing except the Board of County Commissioners. We're the only ones. So, I mean, get with, either get with the program or do your own thing or whatever. But all the people care about when they call 911 is that their ha, if their house is on fire, that some guys in little red trucks show up and squirt water on them. That's all they care about. They don't give a darn if who's in, who's out. They don't care. When grandma's clutching her chest, she wants an ambulance to show up.
Correct. Then we ask.
The entities are being irresponsible by not getting on board. You don't have any numbers? Here's some numbers. It costs sixty-four thousand dollars six times a year. When 911 doesn't work because you haven't joined, don't call me. The county. The county voted to have a 911 center.
Yep, we did.
Join up or don't. I'll make a motion that we go with our Director's recommendation of Motorola seventy-five-hundred system bid number six one six. Is there a second?
Second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
No.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
911 is underway. Do you have anything further, Director?
In reference to this note, sir.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Next item, discussion and possible action regarding an agreement between Oklahoma Communications Systems Incorporated, TDS, and the Board of County Commissioners, Director Hamilton.
This is an annual agreement between TDS and Rogers County Dispatch Center, its services office, we have had an annual agreement with them in the past, and this is just continuing that agreement.
Okay. Questions?
Make a motion if you prefer.
Second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Opening award bid number six twenty-one sprinkler system for the health department. First bid, full circle, full circle C service, claim world home. What do I mean to that? This says estimation. Mr. Iskey? They put estimate on their, I mean, this is a bid, they know it's a bid, it's bid that way, they signed it, does that make any difference?
It could.
They described what they're wanting to do here, it's thirty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars even. Stone Bridge Quality Incorporated. Price to install sprinkler system, twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety dollars. This price includes all labor and material, and that is from Stone Bridge Quality Incorporated.
We'd like to accept that bid from Stone Bridge.
The low bid?
Yes.
Stone Bridge Quality Incorporated. I'll make a motion to approve that bid. Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
To accept Stone Bridge.
Number thirteen reimbursement resolution twenty-fourteen eleven for planning commission for fuel reimbursement eighty-three S D two hundred. The amount is seven hundred forty-two dollars two cents. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number fourteen reimbursement resolution twenty-fourteen dash twelve from OTMS into eighty-two S D two hundred for four thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars sixty cents. Second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number twenty announcements regarding county events and status updates for comments and discussion from county departments and elected officials as follows, 911 administrative, Director Hamilton.
I have interviews this week to fill a position that I'm down one person. On Wednesday, we have a recommendation board meeting, and in discussion with OLETS for access to their terminal, they have advised us that they will no longer supply the equipment to access their database, so we will have to purchase the terminal and the connection to that OLETS software. I'll also be submitting an RFP for protocols, as you, as some of you are aware of the incident that occurred in Delaware with the loss of the child. Protocols in place could have helped sustain that life, and it's caught, or I think that that could very easily happen here in Rogers County. So we will be submitting an RFP for protocols. I'll be submitting an RFP for furniture. I did work with OCI. OCI's recommendation for our furniture needs does not include cable management. As some of you may be aware, that on a busy console, there are dangling cables that can wreck havoc if they're disconnected, so I will be going out for bid on furniture as well. And a bit of good news, we have started dispatching for Vertus Fire Department twenty-four-seven. Now, we, our trial or beta phase was Monday through Friday, eight to five, and this past week, we did Monday through Friday twenty-four, twenty-four hours around the clock. This weekend, this upcoming weekend, we will be doing weekends as well, so we will be taking over their dispatch needs. And that's all I have.
Questions? Thank you, Director. Assessors' office, building operations, county clerk?
I just want to remind everyone that the courthouse may be closed Thursday for Independence Day.
Court clerk?
District attorney?
A question to the county clerk. Thursday being our normal day to submit agenda items, what is your plan since we're closed Thursday?
I'll have to prepare the agenda on Wednesday, so all the items need to be in by Wednesday at noon, please.
Election board? Mercy management? Director Stokes?
Couple of things. I have to apologize to Commissioner Halm, as I told him I would have an update for him last week on the, on the equipment over at the courthouse, and I did not get that to you. But I did get with Mr. John Harwell, he's the president of the Rogers County Wireless Association. He said that he could have enough guys over here this coming weekend, the sixth and seventh, starting at seven o'clock in the morning, and they could get all that, they were willing to come in and pull all the radios, take them, clean them, take them apart, clean them, inventory, everything. Take apart all, there's little power units that go with those things, and I have no idea what that stuff is, afraid to touch it underneath there, but, and then he also, they'll help us with taking down those antennas and everything. I have sent each one of the commissioners an email requesting a couple of personnel if there were, I know it's holiday weekend, that's when these gentlemen were available to do it, and just requesting if we had a couple of county guys that could come in and might be willing to help these. These gentlemen do that, because it's going to be hot, they're going to be up on the roof and moving those antennas and stuff, I'd rather have a couple of guys that know the system and can do the heavy lifting for them. But you can get back with me on the, through email on that. As far as safety training goes, we've set up, I've sent an email to all the district or all the department heads, I'm sort of letting them, gave them the outline of what we plan on doing with our safety training. Each one of the commissioners has got that email also, and the, we're going to try to do the courthouse and all office employees, be it the election board, anybody else that's not actually office here, but might have an interest in the safety training, every second Tuesday of each month. And that'll be from here on out, that way we have an established training procedure and safety. The county, the courthouse employees will be every hour on the hour, same class each day, it'll be taught eight times throughout the day, and it'll be up to the department heads to get their people separated out and scheduled in to attend these classes. The warehouses will be every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of the third week of each month, and we're still working a little bit on times on that, but I think we're talking to the people at Northwest Technology Center, it'll be, the times that we've kind of looked at are going to be agreeable, so, and that'll be an hour long each day for all warehouse employees, and that's really all I've got.
Any questions for Director Stokes? Okay, thank you, sir. Human resources? Inspection planning commission? Director Curtis?
Morning. I thought I would give you an end of the fiscal year update of the construction going on in Rogers County. We've had a total of three hundred and twenty-six new residential permits issued in the past year. We have two hundred and twenty-two commercial permits.
How many?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Total construction for residential is at fifty-four million four hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-two. Commercial is twenty-three million seventy thousand seven hundred and ninety-three, for a total of seventy-seven million five hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. This, I must also stress, this is only in the planning commission, as this is the only area that we have jurisdiction, so we don't have numbers for the other areas.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Judicial, OSU extension?
That is a point this time?
Sheriff's office?
Not present.
Thank you. Treasury. All right. Item number twenty-two, public comments and responses from board members. Ms. Wilson?
Okay, my first question is about the agenda item where you approved the lease leases for this year. I wanted to know if you could tell me what the total number of lease purchases would, you know, how much do you owe on lease purchases, and what's the monthly payments for those?
They're broke down by, by district. District one, five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars sixty-seven cents. Now, is that per?
Month.
That's per month. And district two has zero. District three, forty-four thousand two hundred and five dollars eighty-five cents. And you're pretty, you know, I think that's the need to...
Thank you. And my second set of questions is regarding the Motorola purchase and the 911 center. Do you all know how much of the courthouse bond proceeds remain to pay for the equipment of the 911 center?
Not at this time. Do we know, do you know those numbers yet, Mr. Reeves or Mr. Fady?
Still waiting on some data, so we can do our calculation for you.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know if this is towards you or Ms. Hamilton, how much funding does the 911 account currently have in it?
As of May the thirty-first, it was nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. And what is the monthly fee for entities that want to join the 911 center?
A fee has not been established yet.
Do you know when a fee may be established?
I know that it's something I'm working on, yes.
Okay. On this lease purchase that you guys approved, do you know how that's going to be funded, which account will be taken out of?
Not, not at this, I don't know what account necessarily, but we're opting to go with the lease purchase or the lease program, so I mean, it'll have to go through 911 somewhere.
And Commissioner Delozer, why did the, what was the recommendation of the trust board, and why did they want to consider the other system that Mr. Puckett mentioned earlier?
We were looking at economics, and also the best system for what we need, and we were working on that. We don't need to work on it now.
All right, thank you, that's it.
Can I, can I take one of your questions?
Sure.
Okay. Tax dollars that are not on for the bond, that were approved for the bond for courthouse 911, those monies that are left over in that would be for what is, in legal opinion, the equipping and operation of that 911 center. So what is ever in that bond money, those monies that sit there, which looked the other day was somewhere around eight hundred thousand, would simply be used according to the bond indenturement for the 911 center and the courthouse. So that money would be used for, along with the 911, because we have the equipment according to legal opinion.
Okay, so the eight hundred thousand dollars that is sitting there now?
About.
About eight hundred thousand. Is that what's left after the construction of the 911 center and the EOC, or is that, I mean, can you explain that for me?
It is, the money that's on the bond itself is grouped into that just under one tax dollar, so there is studying for the 911 center, when we looked at it last from Mr. Reeves, which was April one, three or four off the top of my head, and then the money left out for the courthouse was like two hundred and fifty thousand, the excess dollars left, it was the eight hundred.
Okay. So what was the total amount of the bond proceeds from the two bonds that were written for the courthouse and the 911 center?
All total?
The total, yeah.
Oh, I don't remember.
They can get that easily, I don't have it with me.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the bonds were what, twenty-five million or something like that? There were two bonds written. How much was the courthouse to build? I know there's still one outstanding payment, but approximately?
It's under, was scheduled at what, or projected at nineteen, or at, was it twenty-two million?
The original amount was nineteen oh twenty-six, twenty-six.
Yeah. And then what, and it came in at what?
Oh, we're right at two hundred grand underneath that.
So nineteen million approximately?
Approximately.
Okay, so if the bonds were written for approximately twenty-five million, there should be six million dollars left, and how much, how much is the?
I think the twenty-five million, and I'm not certain, I don't have those tickets in front of me, but twenty-five million probably has the bonded indenture fees taken out of it every time, so that twenty-five million wasn't available for construction.
So what's the approximate cost of the 911 center and EOC projects? What's the projected cost?
The 911 center is one million eight hundred sixty-six grand and some change. The EOC, I think we're right at, it was either one oh one hundred one thousand or one hundred ten thousand.
Okay.
I will just...
So conservatively, about two million dollars for both projects. All right. Thank you, I don't think any more questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments, questions? Yes, ma'am?
I was just curious. I'm going back to that item six, where you threw the satellite, you know, like?
Yes.
I couldn't believe it, when you said that they were just going to charge you thirty, you mean thirty-two dollars and fifty cents a month?
No.
I was going to say, that's how it sounded now, like, no way, buildings and all kinds of that.
No, it's three thousand.
Okay, thank you. That's what I said, and people around me were like, thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, I said, uh-uh, not buildings.
I'm pretty good negotiator, but I...
I know it, thank you, that's what I thought, I couldn't believe it. I thought I won a red from these people. That's the case.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Go to item number twenty-three, payment of purchase orders from all departments.
Here's that, CED, I didn't lay it over here.
What is it, oh, CED?
When I was there, it clicked, followed, and it was lying like that.
It's hard to keep that thing.
And laid it out to his side, so I had it over there.
I'm going to take this. Yeah, we're, we're done.
And this one, I'm not sure though, but that's Mr. Iskey, because we want to make sure we do that thing, and so...
What is the top sum for this? For this, I want to tell you more than one word.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Robin.
Well, it's starting to get cold in here. Takes a little bit, like it's.
No, this was just his notes, yeah. He did it.
And when he was there the other day, he was there like an hour and a half, and I thought I could correct the problem.
There isn't a value because when he dashed two, it still had to be.
David said, we're the operator and the sheriff is supposed to sign over here. So I'll sign this one.
That one, I was just not sure about. Okay, is this one okay to vote for?
I need you to take the contract on that building and go find the owner and have him sign it. Let's see.
Mr. McNally?
McAnally.
That's Mally. I think I've got it up here for, here it is. Commercial.
You want it?
Yeah. Okay, can you just make me a copy before you take it? Sure. And then bring, bring your back report back. Yes. I think you can go in there and use Christine's. Yeah. Thank you.
Is this the whole thing?
Uh-huh. And then, oh wait a minute, here. There were two of each one of these. This is the same one.
Same thing?
So this is the right away. I think each one of you needs to sign it.
Thanks for voting.
You ready?
Okay.
We're going to be on a roll here.
Yeah, we're rolling now.
You voted?
He voted. I told him I was going to, he went over there.
I just assumed.
I didn't know he voted.
Thanks for voting.
I didn't know he voted, but Jimmy told me this morning, he said, we got the nine-one-one center done.
He voted.
Okay.
One o'clock meeting, Mr. Collier?
Yep.
You got nothing, you have nothing about thistles or honey locusts or.
Well, what do you, what do you really want to add?
Well, it's just bad when you've got everything under control and what about, what are you doing about the weather? That's what I'm doing too. Man, it was nice this weekend.
We like it, whatever you're doing, we like it. Yeah. Is that a problem?
Not right now. We need a little rain.
Okay.
Can you get some rain to?
I'll do what I can.
Not flooding, because if it's flooding, then we get rain for it. If it's just a nice, good soaking rain, then it'll be all good.
Oh, whatever.
Yeah.
Next weekend, next.
I know. I'm, I'm mowed hay Saturday and bailed it Sunday. Oh, it was nice. I mean, normally, when I'm, when I'm mowing that meta that I did this weekend, blistering hot, I've got my other big meta that I'll do, I've been mowing this week and baling on the fourth, and it, it's always just, you know, just baled off the track, because I'm not one of them fancy boys with a cab.
No air conditioning.
I don't even have a sunshade on my farmall that I use. I got a big hat, sombrero. But, no, it's, it's, even though I get accused of using county equipment to do personal work, last year when I was mowing these, or baling these two metas, there's an old highway, thirty-three splits them. I'm out there sweating like a, you know, here come the county workers mowing the right away, they're in their nice cab tractors, I'm out there, you know, just dying.
Well, this is great to be putting it down. It's going to be nice.
But anyway, do what you can about the rain.
I'll do what I can.
Hey, if you can't do it, I know somebody can, Mike Gundy. I have a man crush on Mike Gundy, I'm just like, I can't help it.
You say it, I mean.
It's the hair.
It's the hair.
It's the hair.
Hey, on your hay production, how was it?
On the what?
Hay production, were you up or down or?
It was better than, well, it was up from last year, but it was down from normal. That, that meta usually makes about a hundred, little over a hundred bales, it made seventy.
And how much did it make last year?
I didn't even bail it last year.
Okay.
I pastored it because I didn't.
Sure.
And then I pulled them off, the year before it made, I want to say it made sixty-two or so, it did a little better.
Sure.
Can I borrow some money?
Huh?
Can I borrow some money?
Oh, no, I've already spent that one. Oh, no way. That's what you want to look over for next year. Mileage, yeah, that's already been spent. I'm going to give you a hurry time.
I don't like him looking at the back of my head.
And some of your jurisdiction, I'm getting the whole shoulder.
What is this?
That's what you want to look over before next week. Promodon.
Are these copies?
Those copies.
Okay. Did you get one for each of us?
Yes. I'm fine, still a little tired. I heard that. I heard that. Oh, yeah. I have solar.
No, no.
You said it, my bees.
We're not in on the joke apparently.
Oh, that's priceless.
Do not repeat that.
I missed something.
Mr. Tucker?
Sir?
My anger is not towards you, my frustration is not towards you, it's towards the person not getting the job. And she knows it, frustrates the heck out of me.
Tell me the difference.
I'm not originally a parent.
Okay, but what can she do? She can't, I mean, she has no, she has no.
We've been asking for months now for her to sit down and, you, you didn't vision what you want. There's no class going to be set until we set a, I was saying from each other, say, sign a contract.
She has no, but she doesn't have, okay.
She knows what her salaries are, she knows what her benefits are, she knows about what a system is going to cost. Right now, it's just never even, nothing's been approved until.
No, but, that's what, the fifty-five hundred system off the Wisco State Contract was cheaper, and we got a lot more done with it. The tower, they was going to do the towers for us, they were filing for the license and everything off the tower. Toll radio was going to do all that for us, and it'd be a turnkey, when they got done, it's going to be a turnkey. Now it's not a big turnkey.
No, don't get involved.
We're going to do it more because of the tower. When you put up that tower, you have to file for licenses, you have to do a study, how many antennas you're going to have on here, you know, and, and none of that's done, so she's going to have to go separate bid for that. Okay. A few, a couple of months ago, I came to one meeting, because it's Dan's project, and he was out of the program together. I remember. And I said, what's it going to take to get it done? And you guys said, we can do this, do this, it didn't happen. Okay, we're the only ones on the hook for getting it done, and you guys can sit there, and I understand, I mean, I even said that, I understand you can't commit until you have numbers, but you guys more than sign the beneficiary portion of it. That doesn't, that just says that if it goes, you know, it's, you own it. I mean, you guys hadn't even done that.
Well, so how? Ooga, tala, have. And we're sitting on that two months now. Ooga, tala, have, I'm just waiting for her to come back with the paperwork from Orson for the towns to sign. I could fax, if you got a fax number, I'll fax over what they, they signed off on.
No, I know they signed off, but there, what, fourteen fire departments?
Well, fire departments don't have to do it. The only people that have to do that beneficiary thing is municipalities.
And how many of them signed off?
Because of the mayors and the police chiefs, because as a mayor, you can't hold a dual role as an officer.
Right.
As of, Ooga, tala, is the only ones I know of.
But the thing is, we're, the commissioners were the only ones on the hook for getting it done.
You're correct, you're correct.
And two years, that thing should, okay, the whole, the whole idea was to build that in conjunction with this courthouse. This is a hundred and five thousand square feet.
I'm with it.
And this little thing over here, so, it's, I'm not waiting.
And that's what we keep telling her.
You guys won't come back with a recommendation and say, this is what we've got to have, join up, do something.
She keeps saying, well, we're waiting for the people who do the beneficiaries. Don't wait, don't wait, push it through it, because there's a clause in there, there's a clause in there that says, hey, a letter date, you can come on board with the vote of the board. And that's all it takes, you know, and if people see, this is an awesome thing, we want to be a part of it now. You're not going to deny them, nobody's going to deny them.
No one is. And it may cost more.
The system that we wanted to look at, that fifty-five hundred, i- is the same system that Claremore has.
Are you going to, okay.
Which, if Claremore comes on board, they said it would take a half a day for them to move their stuff over there and hook up right to that system.
But Claremore's not on board. That's the thing.
I mean.
Everybody keeps saying if this happens, if you wait for all the conditions to be perfect, nothing will ever happen.
We're, we're just looking in a crystal ball saying, what if?
And we've wanted it for two years, and.
I agree, well, you know, I went to some meetings with him before this thing really even got kicked off.
Three years, three years.
Hey, I've been right here, I, I've taken the chewing from Mr. Hell before too, you know, but if that's what it takes is for me to come in here and keep pushing this and try to get it going right, I'm going to take it, I'm going to stand up.
Get it going right, it wasn't going anywhere. Wasn't even going anywhere.
I'm telling you, Mr. Tucker, it's because of Ms. Hamilton.
Well, I don't, I don't know that that's a hundred percent the problem.
We've been, well, ever since then, we went out for that beneficiary thing, we've been telling, put it on, no, we haven't got, we haven't got them all back, don't wait for them, you don't have to wait for them. As they come in later on, we can adjust it.
Don't you think though, in her position, she comes in and says, well, I've only got two to sign up. I mean, that, that doesn't look, that doesn't look good, and it's not her, it's not her responsibility to get everybody to sign up.
And that's what I'm saying, go with what you have, push it forward, go with what you have.
She has to have the support of the Board of County Commissioners before she can really do anything, and I don't know that she's had that until.
Providing a form.
Today.
Well, I, I think, like you said, we've been focused on these what ifs, what if we have to wait for those pretty much to get all these people to sign up? We're still going to be behind, we're behind, we was behind from the get-go.
Well, let me, let me share something, she came to me a while back, and she said, I've got to have some help, I've got to, you know, we're getting, we're behind, we're behind, this is way before we were behind. And I said, well, what do you need, you know, what can I do to help you? Well, I need this, I need these people signed up, I need, you know, these different things. And, you know, that's the one meeting, when I came to the meeting, and everybody said, yeah, we can do that. And then when it didn't happen, I'm a, you know, if you say you're going to do it and then you don't do it, I just, it's kind of like the guys that work for me, if they don't show up at six o'clock, if they didn't call in, I just assume they quit. And if they say they're going to do it and then they don't do it, then, I mean, I guess I'm just old school, let's do something, do something, right, wrong, or indifferent, let's get something going. And if, I truly believe if we wait until the conditions are perfect, we'll be waiting.
You'll be waiting, I agree with it, you'll be waiting.
It's never going to happen.
But it can't be better than what it is right now.
But we got to start somewhere. And all we've done so far is, we have what's called a trust board that really is not a trust board.
No.
It's, it's an advisory board. Where's the advice?
We have a meeting Wednesday, and we're going to ask them formal, written, formal to Ms. Hamilton to put that on the agenda, because we have enough to make the board, we have enough to move forward. We don't need to wait for everybody.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, we're moving forward regardless, with, with people or without them, because if we build and equip, which is what the voters said to do, we've done our due diligence.
We got that covered, man.
If, if someone's out there and their house burns down because you guys weren't, weren't involved, you didn't know, whatever, that's on you guys. But it, it's not going to happen on, we, we have enough, we have enough issues, enough issues to deal with, with elections that may or may not have been right, we, we have all these other things, that nine-one-one shouldn't be a political issue, it shouldn't be. I mean, I meant what I said, when someone's house is on fire, they just want you to show up and put it out.
Somebody's having a heart attack, they want you to show up and say. When somebody gets robbed, they want you to show up and say.
And this whole, if you think about this timeline and this whole thing, from when it started, everybody, who's in control, they're all fighting over who's in control, okay? At least two of us said, we don't care who's in control, let's just get it built, make it happen. Well, then that wasn't, well, where's it going to be? Well, it's going to be in Claremore, but we can't get that done because we couldn't get water, we couldn't get this, okay, let's move to Inola, oh, no, we don't want to do that, with an eight-inch water line, a twelve-inch sewer line already there, three hundred and some foot tower already there, no, it's too far, well, you're not going down there, and Inola is the center of the world, so it's not like, you know, you're going out of your way, we don't want that, well, Claremore's on board, no, Claremore's not on board. If it, build it, and if y'all want to come on, come on, and if you, if you can't afford it, you don't like it, whatever, I mean, that's, that's your decision, but, no, I'm not angry at all, I'm angry at the, at the lakes. And we've got poor old Danny here, he's been working on this forever, and.
I'm sorry.
He's trying to make people happy, they're never going to be happy, they're not going to be happy until it's, until it's completed. And when, and when it's completed and everything's working good, and people see that it's working good, working the way it's supposed to work, then, you know, then it'll be okay, but it's, in the meantime, it's not going to be perfect to get it started.
Well, like I said, my frustration is towards Ms. Hamilton, when she sends us an email that says, okay, we can do the Wisco contract, this is what we're, we're going to look at, and then all of a sudden this is put on the agenda, to, we're just looking at saving money, to save money, it's going to benefit us plus more.
With a system that would last for many, many years to come, for half of what you just paid.
Well, this one wasn't on the agenda.
That's what I'm saying, it's just Hamilton.
If you knew this other deal, why didn't you put it on the agenda? Let's go fix that hundred, let's rock and roll, let's do something.
I found out this morning this was on the agenda, she didn't call me and tell me anything.
And that was, you know, I've gone to meetings and also with you started out with all this stuff, and I've, I've just been here, I've been seeing frustration you guys have, and I've just.
That's why I wanted to take it, find out what the hell was going on, didn't know anything about it.
Well, it's, it's been, I keep saying two years, it's been three years. That's, that's not going to work.
Too long, whatever it is, it's too long.
I, you know, I don't think it's, I think the director is doing all that she has the authority to do. Does that make sense? I mean, if she doesn't, if she doesn't have some support from her bosses, then she's going to be, just like you guys, she can't give you a definitive, definite answer because she doesn't have that authority. And, I mean, I can't, I can't sit here week after week, and listen to, it, it's frustrating, I know the firemen are frustrated, probably more than anyone else. And I don't know why the firemen so much, I mean, the police, I don't hear it as much from them. The firemen, I talk to them all the time, and they're like, hey, we just, we want, and everybody wants the same thing, they want a dispatch center that works.
I'll tell you why I'm so frustrated, because I'm running out of a dispatch office right now that the owner of that dispatch office is originally from Texas, and he has no commitment to our community. You, you know what I'm saying, and we're going to get what he wants to get us.
Well.
And we get what he gives us, or I'd say he. And we get what he gives us, or I'd say he, the dispatch center that we're in, we get what they give us. So that, that's my frustration, is that we're having to dole money to a company that has no ties, no grounds, no, nothing here in Rogers County.
Well, the Board of County Commissioners have deep ties to Rogers County.
You, you do.
And, you know, so that's, but you say you're, you're paying up, I, I asked the question one time, a long time ago. I said, okay, what are you paying for dispatching now? And for easy figuring, say a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Twenty-two thousand a year.
Would you, huh?
I pay twenty-two thousand a year.
Okay, say twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Would you sign up if the cost is twenty-two thousand dollars, give or take five percent, one percent, or if it doesn't go over twenty-two thousand? And everybody looked at me and said, well, I don't know. They couldn't even commit, they couldn't even commit to what they're already paying.
A lot of them are afraid to speak because they have to go report to a board, and if they speak on something, they come back and they, they can get in trouble. But I've kept communication with my board. We know that we're gonna have to probably pay just a little bit more than what we're paying, because we're gonna get more service, we're gonna get a recorded service. We're gonna get an address that pops up on a computer screen, you can repeat it to me as it is, not what you think you heard.
Right.
So we know that we're gonna get that extra stuff.
But what I'm saying is, if, if, back then, if they were to say, yeah, I pay twenty-two thousand dollars a year, I will sign up if it doesn't go over twenty-two thousand. They, people wouldn't even do it then. Well, no, we want, I mean, in fact, some of them said, we want it cheaper. Really? I want it cheaper too, but nine-one-one's not where we skimp. We skimp when we buy, um.
Weed eater line.
Weed eater line, there you go. But nine-one-one's not the place to skim it out.
No, and I agree with you. Like I said, I'm just frustrated that, you know, I get emails saying we're gonna discuss this, and here it is on the agenda, and it's totally different from what we had discussed in the last meeting. It just, that's the frustrating part.
But that was the bid. That was what was bid, was that seventy-five hundred. I don't speak nine-one-one, I don't, again, my house on fire.
But the fifty-five hundred is on state contract, so you don't have to bid it.
Well.
You can call them up tomorrow and say, hey, I want the system, they'll get it ordered and get it started and then. We don't have to go back out for bids, not with it being on that state contract.
Well, think about this, when you drive across any bridge in the state of Oklahoma, you're driving across the low bid bridge. Makes you feel good. The guy that was the cheapest got the job. That's not always better, that it's cheaper. I mean, it's not always better just because you paid more necessarily, but you, I mean, that's what, uh, and right now, Janet Hamilton's the director, that's the only link we have to this nine-one-one. I mean, you guys, I mean, we love you and all, but you're not, you're not a part of it at this point. So how can I listen to someone that's, you, you keep, they keep saying the users of it, but yet you're not a user of it at this point? So, and I've been listening to that for three years. What's it gonna cost? Well, I don't know, but let's do something. And, and the seventy-five, I mean, the trend is to go to eight-hundred trunk revenues, right?
I don't think we'll ever see that in our lifetime.
You don't?
Not in Rogers County.
Why?
We got the system to do it though.
Yeah, why? That's my question, why?
Because the funds are null and void now, so all that money that was there for all of these other places to upgrade that, they got all their grants and stuff, well, now it's totally gone, it's totally wiped out, there's no more money in there for that.
Hopefully, online security will eventually, but they're not gonna do it for years.
Not unless something happens.
What happens, what happened, I mean, what kind of money are you talking about?
Hi, John. A rough guess, I'm gonna, a rough guess to put in a system here in Rogers County, I'd probably say five to ten million, easy if not more.
Five to ten million. And over the next ten years.
Eight-hundred system, cover Rogers County.
Five to ten million. Okay, over the next five to ten years, if, if this county is growing, and it will, why wouldn't we just pay for it ourselves? What, what is all this? Well, let's go to the federal government. Uh, you know, we've got, okay, just for example, the city of Catoosa, they're getting a wallmark. Do you know what that's gonna do for the tax revenue just for the city of Catoosa?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, what's that do for the county of Rogers? Just that one wallmark, then all these other things, I mean, they got some things going on by the way, some of the Rogers County side, not much, houses.
But on the same hand, if, if you can take that five or ten million and knock it down to, let's say, a half a million, and still have the same capabilities as an eight-hundred system, to still can communicate with everybody.
They isn't the same.
You can communicate with everybody, anybody, and that's all the things that they're worried about, is having that interoperability amongst all the agencies, right?
That's what everybody said, that I've talked to, every fireman, every, I mean.
You can build it.
Okay, if you're, you're in a house fire, and all of a sudden, some guy comes running out because he said it's going to fire, and he, and he starts shooting, whoops, we need the sheriff's office over here, this is, sheriff's office, I don't know what you're doing.
It's called a, it's called a rainbow system. You can get a system put in there without all the eight-hundred infrastructure that you need, and you can take an eight-hundred radio connected to a VHF, UHF, you can connect everybody together just by a system that you put in there, not eight-hundred.
There has to be some further down the road vision than what we have to have today. That's why this, this county has grown to a point, and then, you know, there's been, I mean, the economy has stagnated, stagnated some of it.
Right.
But it's still growing.
Oh, yeah.
We're not in the same, uh, financial crunch that, that a lot of the country is in. I mean, it's, gas is killing everybody. Houses are selling, things are still moving. Why? Why is it better in Rogers County than it is some of these other counties?
Well, it, it falls to the overall infrastructure that y'all have here. It falls back to, I know, I can speak for you, where I'm at over in Hell's District. He's improving it every day.
Yep, it's happening in all three districts.
And that's what people look for.
Exactly. And, okay, if they look at it, nine-one-one center, these guys can't even, you know, they can't even get together on that. They might, they might back off a little bit. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that need to happen, but the best way to eat that elephant's one bite at a time. It's gonna go eighty-hundred. Look further down the road, it is going to go to eight-hundred trunk, and you guys will be real happy when it happens. You won't? You're just not saying that it will.
Don't have to afford the handhelds, but where can we get the building?
Yeah. We're not getting the building phone. We're not getting the building phone. I can smell someone.
That's his good ear too.
I can smell someone over there trying to steal the building phone. Kim?
Yes, sir.
Go on.
Okay.
Did you bring any boys? Cause I hadn't seen you in a couple weeks, I thought maybe. I'm just saying.
So where do we stand with Janet and paying her bills?
In what, what area, what?
Well, I don't know, because.
Y'all wanna pay her bills, that's fine, go on. Y'all wanna pay her bills?
We've been paying them.
Well, good, thank you.
Yeah, you know, but now it's July first, and we thought that she was gonna take her own off, and she just called me, and she wrote a P.O., or put a request in for about twelve hundred dollars from papers, miscellaneous stuff for the dispatch. So I should know, if she's paying for it, if we're still paying for it, where did this thing go?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so I can't.
She should have it in her budget.
Yeah, it should be in her budget, I would think. What do you want, John? What you want us to do?
No, that's it, that's all.
What, what you wanting, John?
I'll tell her. And now.
Did she not put it in her budget?
Oh, I don't know. Nelson said I need to sign some papers.
Uh, yeah, there's a. Let's see, is this it? Is on that user agreement or something? I think that's it.
He'll, he'll be over in a minute.
Yeah, wait for Nelson, I don't know which one it was.
What was a nice weekend?
Beautiful weekend.
Yeah, what more is there?
Not one thank you call. Did you get any thank you calls?
No.
How good when it's flooded, they always call us. You made it flood, but on a beautiful day. Nah, they were too busy enjoying the good weather, that's what it was. What'd you do all weekend, Felicia?
Hung out with my family.
That's fun. Hung out with my dad. We mowed, we mowed hay all Saturday, and then we bailed all Sunday. He was raking, I was bailing, we'd meet each other back before. Wave at each other. And we'd get together when something broke down, we'd both work on it, and then we'd go back to our respective tractors. Go on. Usually that John Dear stuff broke down. Case IH businesses, that's good stuff. That's what I drive, he's a John Dear man. Did you know that not all tractors are green?
No.
There's some red tractors, believe it or not.
That blue one.
Well, the new, the new Case IH and the Ford's are the same tractor. Identical, made of the same blueprint. I have an answer.
When I was asking those questions earlier about the, we're now, who manages that one? Who's in charge of it?
Okay, there, there are a lot of, uh, we could, the, the treasurer, RCB bank. All I see are the, the numbers at the end. As far as management, RCB Bank actually manages that, that money.
That, uh, parent legally?
Yes, parent legally. Oh, just so you guys know, we put that, that other lecturn out there and put the agendas on it for people when they're walking in, rather than
That's a cool idea.
Make their way up here, trip over Felicia's cord she's got on the floor there. You know, you use a lot of power out of this building. You got stuff plugged in over here, you got stuff plugged in over there, well, you did. Is it not there now?
No, it's still plugged in.
Okay. I don't know what that is.
John, what you been up to?
Quiet.
Had a good weekend?
Did you spread hate and discontent?
No, I was in Bricktown.
Bricktown?
Bricktown.
I don't know. She's hollering at somebody.
She's hollering at Rick.
And that would be you. How are you today, sir? Good.
Ricky, what do you know?
Hard work. One nice courthouse.
Isn't it beautiful?
How are you?
Hello, Mr. Ham, how are you?
Doing fine, sir. You gonna meet new city manager at the Wausau?
No, sure.
How about Catoosa?
No, sure.
Okay. Figured you'd at least take a stab at one of them.
We could let the city manager that's in the Wausau beat city manager Catoosa.
He needs to apply.
Let's just swap. I heard you to fly for it, Mike.
Me?
That's what I heard.
Good idea.
Of course, you didn't hear anything. Oh, she was hollering at that guy.
His name happens to be Richie, I guess.
And apparently, they went down to the county clerk, but they need to go to court clerk. That happens all the time.
They'll start the seat.
An Indian cake.
They'll start the seat too. They never come in here one day.
Oh, I, you bet if you ask Christine, that they probably have.
Probably. See, the meeting is at eleven.
Look, we've got some more work to do, get them the ladder.
The ladder, son.
They ain't in bags, dude, they got work.
Mr. Hayes, would you like some coffee or water?
No, ma'am, thank you.
John. Nelson called me, I just wanted to. Any signs for the sheriff?
Sure.
For, um, what Janet presented, upon law enforcement talk, communications, that's what they're trying to do. And I just always had two copies.
So, what do you hear, Ricky? Are we gonna get anything around here? No, being there? Got a few things?
Do you think First Baptist Church in Wausau could give us some nice pews for the commissioners' courtroom?
For the what?
Some nice pews, padded, I would say more with padded.
So what, for what?
The commissioners' courtroom here.
No, we don't have pews, we have chairs. What a beautiful ceiling. We pull it out and make a band and all that.
A band? See, you know about the, the folding
Yeah.
wall right here that this makes a stage?
Yeah, we got, we got a band that comes out, like, chorus band, you know, the jazz bands back in the fifties, who was it?
Barber shop, barber shop quartet.
Wood floor for dancing.
Yeah. Had food and all that, makes it really loud. Had almost a twenty-one hundred Sunday, Ricky, if you'd come in there and twenty-two.
I'm not a hundred.
Two hundred and one.
Well, if he shows up, thirty-two minutes, people will come and just see where he goes.
Today's the first.
Getting to the new fiscal year. When I left work Friday, I said, I'll see you guys on the next fiscal year. Cause that's the way we operate.
Can I get a copy that when you get a chance, and just throw it in the box?
Sure. I'll just go here to one of them.
Yeah, just whatever, either way.
Yeah, we've scheduled for eleven, isn't it? Today's meeting.
Where's the agenda? Okay, I'll get one tomorrow.
There's one somewhere.
You say shooting fireworks off with your grandkids, around your grandkids, they're still kinda little.
Yeah, mine's too late. Yeah, mine's too little.
I'd ask you guys two, two quick minutes today.
Yeah, there was a special meeting, um. What day was that?
It was after the criminal justice authority.
Yeah.
No, I.
I wasn't there. That was on Thursday, wasn't it? Yeah, I was at the.
I wanted to come in for that.
Those two were, were there.
Yeah, it was like, not even five minutes long.
Looks like the statutory correction meeting. Takes five minutes, but it's required by law and.
Say hi, hey, Tim.
You know, I used to, back when, before caller I D and all that. If, you know, some guy sounded like a teenager called and wrong number, said, hey, is Lisa there or something? No, man, she went out and robbed. Who is this? And there'd be a click on the phone. Oh, man. And the caller I D came up, I kind of ended the whole prank call. Hello? Oh, you meant to call Wade. All right. Okay. Well, you too, bye.
My sister moved in. She knows that. Oh, gosh. That's what Justin was saying.
I bet she was going crazy, huh?
She was like, what he said?
No, 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 cause she watches it too.
She said, you posted messages.
Yeah, Gina says. She called, she sent it. Oh, I.
Morning, Mr. Orson.
Morning.
The man, the myth. The legend. How you doing, sir?
How are you, sir? Robin, how are you?
I'm good. I'm standing up and you're still, I'm just barely taller than you. And I'm on a platform.
Well, I guess that's right. Women aren't supposed to be tall, Mike, like me, unless, unless they're great basketball players.
Hey, if I run out, that's all it is. See, we got five minutes before this next meeting. Wouldn't wanna start before it pulls the tone. It's just. Well, no, we, we have to.
Mr. Orson, clock started and he left. It's awesome.
I can't help it. It's close to front of that. Someone comes in.
Especially when I pop off this, you know, gas.
That's what Nelson left on the floor.
It's pretty one, dude.
Oh, yeah.
That could be confiscated. That could be confiscated as a weapon.
That used to be ours, but in this office.
Can't even take a nail file on an airplane anymore. Always make sure of leaving it home.
From this one? What was that?
Yeah, but you got erasing ink.
Sometimes they stuck together. Still smells new in here.
It is. It's just beautiful. We love it.
It just makes me want, wanna wear a suit and tie.
I don't think so.
Yeah, you're right.
Is Johnny coming in here?
Yes, he did. He signed up. I found Nelson.
Johnny, yeah, big head. Johnny's been very likely.
We shouldn't have as many offices out. Have lot of purchase orders to start up new year.
This is the end of the old ones.
Yeah, these, yeah, these are the old ones. Is it next week we won't have any? There's one week in there where.
They just keep coming.
Well, I know, but there's one week.
We shouldn't have as many offices out.
They lightened up a little bit last week, didn't they, Son?
We, we tried to, the last couple of weeks, not to do much spending if we helped it, to help you finish up your end of the year, but it's tough to. Tough to do.
Red lobster coming anywhere close in Claremore so we can go eat.
Got an email from him this morning.
About, about Charleston's.
We're on that one too.
Have you been there again?
I love Charleston. I, I love you too.
I mean, we had one here. We can take, give and take us.
I agree with that.
There you go.
Sir, Ricky.
Bring it and we will come.
We did hold off on maybe that. Smith's still on. Smith's still on or didn't sell it?
Have.
He didn't? He didn't?
No.
He still has?
And a bunch of others. They're talking now. Red lobster's talking about. Lot of garden or red lobster in one building. Separated. You come in the main, uh, I mean, and the rest of the plants, they share the kitchen.
Okay, it's eleven o'clock. I'll make a motion to recess. A regular commissioner meeting.
Any recess in there, three minutes?
Three minutes? Yeah.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Helm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to recess.
Then we'll start her either one week when he comes back. How about that's a regular, regularly scheduled commissioner's meeting at eleven twenty-five? Is there a second?
Thacker?
Here.
Delosier?
Here.
Helm?
Here.
We have a quorum to return from Lisa.
All right, back to side. Where are you going?
Little boys on the building.
You can do it. Oh, that's all we have left, isn't it?
Yes.
No, I mean. P O's. When are you supposed to meet them?
I thought it was twelve twenty-five.
Could you say this is all of the P O's?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm gonna leave a signed copy of this with, right here on Ron's.
Okay.
For her copy, for her files? You all have a good fore.
You too. You too. Thank you. You have a good one.
I appreciate it.
Robin?
Yes?
We're finishing.
Finishing up. Here I am.
Is there something assigned on here? This is the, uh. The P B S thing.
Mm-huh. Three places.
I'll look at that and send it over there. We got the sign.
Thank you. You're welcome. We have.
There's one coming. Is this?
Teresa brought this down. It's, uh, something that frozen arrow on one of the districts. I don't care. I had to add, I had to add a little bit more to it. Somebody didn't have enough hours to turn it over.
We'll have to go back.
She called for Mr. Wiskie and he said, just turn it over. Said we wanna go back to.
Is that in the mind?
Yes.
Let's do this first. Do we have a, a motion to pay purchase orders?
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Helm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to.
Okay, back to item number fifteen, claims under salaries. It says we have a correction.
Yes.
In the amount of twenty-two dollars ninety-five cents. And that's for a warrant that was issued to Dustin.
Pendrift.
Pendrift.
Some of the hours shorted. We'll be closed after you.
Okay.
Just wanted to make you guys aware.
What about all this?
She's got it filled in, but she.
It is? Oh, I can't see it.
I know, it's still turned.
I said, let's make that, uh, make documentation.
Oh, it is there. Wow. I thought it was blank.
She said, she tried to.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Helm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, go. You guys have some sign that. It's over here. It's kinda small. Okay, here's this back. And then he left, he left a copy of your.
I saw that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to recess or adjourn?
Motion adjourned, thank you.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Helm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to adjourn at?
Eleven thirty-one.
Thank you, sir.